Chair Blockus, they started the recording whenever you like to start. If you want to wait for Commissioner Ma, that's fine.
Do we?
Just want to let you know.
Is Commissioner Ma supposed to be here or is he going to be scheduled to be out tonight?
Um, I believe he may be out for the night. Let me double check. I have, I've tracked everybody down in a second. Okay. Well, it's not getting me there in a second. Sorry. I can't answer it. I guess it's not letting me access my one notes. I believe he's supposed to be out for two meetings in July. So that's what I believe is correct, but I, I can, oh, here we go. July 6th, Mike, Christian Ma will be absent and he will also be absent on the 20th. Thank you.
Great. Okay. Then we'll go ahead and begin. I'd like to welcome everyone to Design Review Commission meeting for July 6th. We have a fairly heavy schedule. So let's go ahead and jump into establishing quorum. We already know that Commissioner Ma will not be present. So if you can just say, ah, when I read your name off, Jude Kirk.
Here.
Commissioner Bishop.
Here.
Commissioner Harding.
Here.
And myself, Commissioner Blockus, Chair Blockus is here. So we have four out of the five present. Sean, do we have any people who signed up for comments that are not on our agenda?
I do not, I have not been notified of anyone who would like to speak on an item not on the agenda. If a member of the public would like to speak, please raise your hand. If you cannot raise your hand, then please unmute yourself and provide us your name, which is voluntary. I do not have anybody who's raised their hand and I do not have anybody who's unmuted themselves. So we have no public comments that are not on the agenda.
Okay, we'll go ahead and move to the consent calendar. We do have two items. Does anyone have any questions or want to remove one for discussion or do I have a motion on the two items?
I saw move.
Do we have a, to move to?
To.
To approve.
To approve.
Okay. Do we have a second?
Frank will second.
Okay, we have move in a second. We'll go ahead and take a vote on it. Commissioner Kirk.
Hi.
Commissioner Bishop.
Hi.
Commissioner Harding.
Hi.
And Chair Blockus, I as well. So those have been moved and we'll go into our items for consideration tonight. Our first item is a variance at V 21 dash 0003 and DR 22 dash 0067 for the property located at 10900 Beechwood Lane. Sean, do we have a presentation from staff?
Yes, just one moment so I can. One second, sorry. It's not letting me. There we go. Not letting me start it. Second, there we go. Good evening, Chair Blockus and Commissioners. The application before you tonight is for a variance for a 10 foot front, front yard setback where a 25 foot front yard setback is required. The R110 district and a designer view application for an emergency generator and a sound attenuating accessory structure for a pre-existing community facility, which is an existing potable water pump station at 10900 Beechwood Lane. See if it'll shift. There you go. The project site again is located at 10,900 Beechwood Lane. It is zone, single family. R120, I'm sorry, and does general plan designation is single family, two dwelling units per acre. The site is on, the site is on the east side of Beechwood Lane with the nearest cross street at Aspen Drive. Prior to the incorporation of City of Los Altos, Santa Clara County approved the steel tank for water storage, tank for hydrodynamic pressure booster pumping station within an enclosed structure that currently exists the site. The site is enclosed with a six foot tall chain link fence along the street frontage and with six foot tall wood fence along the side and rear. The site is located immediately adjacent to single family homes on the left and right and two homes directly behind. Second. The variance is for a 10 foot front yard setback where normally it's a, an increased setback of 25 feet for an emergency generator and a sound attenuating structure for a pre-existing community facility. Move again, one second. There we go. Procedurally, the Community Development Director typically acts on designer view applications for accessory structures. Since the generator and enclosure requires a variance application, the review was referred to the Designer View Commission. The proposed generator will be 11.3 feet tall in a 3.7, 1.3 foot tall sound attenuating structure with a proposed 10 foot setback to the front, 74 foot setback to the right side, 43 feet to the left side and 150 to the rear. The side and rear yard complies with the setback requirements of the district with approval of the variance for a reduced front yard setback. The proposed generator and enclosure will comply with the zoning ordinance. And I should go back, even though I've stated it, I need to apologize. The, this is a zone R120 and the standard setback for R120 in the front is 30 feet. So they're asking for a reduction from the 30 foot setback. The 100 foot square foot generator enclosure has a maximum height, which is below the permitted 12 foot height limit for an accessory structure. The structure size and overall height does reduce the overall appearance of size and scale. The natural landscape is preserved insofar as practical by minimizing tree and soil removal. The applicant proposes the removal of four silver wattle trees due to conflicting with the footprint of the generator and the tree removals are consistent with the tree removal ordinance in regards to removal due to impact for economic and other enjoyment. The generator will be screened from public view by six foot tall solid fence with two feet of lattice, which is proposed by the applicant. Applicant is also proposing for new 15 gallon evergreen screening trees, either Prunus Caroliniana or put a Carpus Gracilia along the street frontage and to retain the existing mature landscaping that exists between the existing fence and the street. General architectural considerations include the character size and scale and quality of it. The structure size and overall height reduces the overall appearance. The metal building will be painted in earth tone color to be consistent with the surrounding neighborhood and structures will be screened again by fencing and evergreen screening vegetation. The generator has a similar architectural style to existing structures on the site pursuant to the zoning code. The generator enclosure meets the specific site development objective standards of the municipal code. Section 6.1609A of the zoning of the noise ordinance exempts the generator from the noise ordinance standards when the utility, utilities activities are associated with the emission of sound and the performance of emergency work, such as the operation of a backup power generator during an emergency when commercial power is unavailable. Therefore, the generator noise levels are permissible for a public utility site under, under the performance of emergency generator work. Emergency work. After the installation of the generator, the generator will need to be tested intermittently for 15 minutes per week. The generator in the custom enclosure meets the city's daytime limit of 60 decibels for short-term duration noise in a residential area. Therefore, the custom built reduced noise generator complies with section, with the section of the noise ordinance. Furthermore, staff is requesting condition number three that requires that all generator testing occur between 7:30 to 3:30 PM and the maximum period of testing should be 15 minutes. In order to grant a variance, the commission must find the following three findings that are in your report and in the findings for the project. The granting the variance will be consistent with the objective standards, objectives of the city zoning ordinance. As I said previously, the structure with the variance will comply with the front left or will comply with the left, right and rear setbacks. And with the variance, it will comply with the front setback as approved by the commission. The proposed generator at a, at a reduced height will be less than 12, 12 feet in height, which meets the minimum requirements for an accessory structure for the district. The granting of the variance again will not be detrimental to the public health, safety or welfare persons living or working in the vicinity. This is because the generator is exempt from, from the noise standards when the utility is, work is associated with the emission of noise from emergency work and that the generator intermittent testing will be no greater than 15 minutes. And the decimal ratings created by the generator as per the noise ordinance will be consistent with the city's noise ordinance. And that there are special circumstances applicable to the property due to the existing location of the tank and the ancillary structure for the potable water pump station, which constrains or limits the potential alternative locations on the subject site. The strict application of the provisions of this chapter would require the generator to be installed at the rear of the site, which would create potential noise impacts to five adjacent properties along the rear and sides of the property. The proposed generator reduces potential noise impacts to the street frontage and limits potential noise impacts to only two adjoining neighbors. As part of the packet, the applicant did provide photo photographs of, that shows an example of what the generator looks like at other sites. It'll be a custom generator. The applicant is available to speak about the type of enclosure that'll be used in the generator. The, the tank for the fuel system is located within this enclosure. It is not a separate facility. Again, this shows the, the custom enclosure. Staff does recommend approval, staff does recommend approval of the variance application and approval of the designer view application. This concludes staff's presentation. Is there any questions? Thank you.
Great. Thank you, Sean. Commissioners, any questions for staff?
None.
Frank or Jude?
Frank has questions, but they may be better directed to the, to the applicant than, than Sean. But I'll try one with Sean. How do they make emergency power today?
I don't have an answer for that. I don't believe the site has emergency power available at the site, but the, the California Water District are here tonight at the meeting and they can probably answer that question.
Yeah, I'll hold my questions till then. Thanks.
Okay. And Jude, any questions for staff? Sure. Sean, was there any consideration of narrowing the operational testing hours? 7:30 is quite early in the morning. And where did that range come from? Can we narrow that down a little bit?
So the, so that range comes directly from the noise ordinance, which specifies decibel levels for specific time periods. And so that was pulled directly from it. If, if the commission wants to constrain that and have it later in the morning, I mean, you do have the discretion to, to recommend that. You may want to inquire with the water, Cal Water District if they may have any concerns with modifying that time period.
Okay. Second question, was there any consideration to like partially submerging this, given it's kind of in a hillside? I know a little bit there, but any, anything of bearing it a little bit more?
Staff did raise the issue with the applicant about potentially lowering the structure further and they had believed that it had been sufficiently lowered, below grade to sufficiently access the, the generator. They are here tonight and they could speak to that particular question, but we did raise that issue.
My, thank you. Then my last question, did the two most impacted neighbors, given the topography and configuration, 10, 9, 4, 5, 10, 9, 5, oh, Beechwood Lane, is there, has there been any notification, any correspondence or any, anything with those neighbors, given that they are the ones that are going to hear this most often?
Staff has not received any comments from any of the surrounding neighbors regarding the proposed project. The, the subject site was, was posted far in advance, a number of months in advance of the actual application or the meeting date. So we did have the notice development proposal posted earlier on the site and then the notice was posted at the front of the site. I believe 10 day or 11 days in advance of the meeting date. So we did notify the public in that process, but we haven't received any comments from the public.
And, and do you know anybody here to speak from the public on this issue?
Um, I am unaware. I have not received any letters or voicemails regarding this particular project.
Okay, thank you. Great. Thank you, Jude. I have a couple of questions, but they're actually probably going to be better answered by the applicant. So we'll go ahead and move forward. The applicant has a presentation. It is your turn at this point to go ahead and make that presentation. Is there someone from the water district here?
Yes, Mandy, who has the water district emblem on her.
Good afternoon. Name is, is Mandy. I'm with California Water Service. We have also Don Smithson, District Manager. I have also the project manager for the project, Hassabada, and Capital Delivery Project Manager, Derek Conker, is this quoted.
Is there anything further you want to tell us about the project or are you just looking for us to ask questions?
I think Sean already captured the one, what was the reason for, for the generator to be installed at the site? And if there's any questions from you and then we, we will be happy to answer.
Okay. So we'll go ahead and open it up. Commissioners, Frank, why don't you go ahead and begin? You had a couple of questions.
Okay. So directed towards the applicant.
Correct.
Oh, yes. So I see the, the request here is for a generator, emergency power. How, how do you make emergency power today? And if you don't, why do you need this generator?
So hi, my name is Melinda Schmidt. I'm the superintendent in Los Altos. And we currently, when we have emergencies, we have to move a portable generator to that location, which is very hard. If you've seen the station, it's a very, there's a severe incline. So for purposes of safety and having immediate response to a power outage, the gen set was the best fit for this project.
I see. I know the site. So so I'm pretty much against diesel generators, industrial diesel generators in neighborhoods, as you probably tell by the, my questions here. For a number of reasons, pollution being a noise and general pollution of the air is a, is a couple. Did you look at other alternatives other than a diesel generator to provide power?
I believe our engineers have looked at other options. I'm not exactly sure what, but I will say that we have these gen sets and other locations throughout our system. And the, they run, the runtime is minimum. I haven't had any people, any complaints in regards to them running. And also with the, when we're, we're seeing more and more power outages with the UGNE. And it's, this location is pretty critical because it's not just for that immediate zone right there. We also lift up to a higher level for pumping purposes. So I think that our engineers have looked at other options and this is the best option that has worked in many locations, not just our system, but other districts that we serve too.
Right. It's, it's a very old style option. There's lots of cleaner solutions available today than Caterpillar diesels and neighborhoods. I'm just disappointed that there isn't an alternative even being discussed tonight.
Yeah. Good evening, Los Altos City staff. My name is Gurkaran Kaur and I'm the Electrical Engineering Manager here at Cal Water. So I wanted to address your question on the various options that have been considered so far for this particular installation. We evaluated propane and natural gas generator option for this facility. The few reasons why we did not opt for those are the, the natural gas lines, because we are in a, in a kind of like a facility where we are earthquake prone area, right? So when there is a emergency power outage, there is also, or any other natural disaster, there is more chances of a natural gas line not working and not being able to provide power, backup power for those emergency reasons. We have also not considered propane or natural gases. Generally with propane generators, they need a separate propane tank that is separate from actually the engine that, that runs that generator, which means larger footprint and more area where that, those kind of installations work. So in, in this case, because of the limited space and the larger horsepower that we need to provide for the pumps that we have at this facility, we chose the most economical, most space feasible requirement that meets the air board's requirements and noise regulations too. We worked with Cummins and Cummins Caterpillar and I believe Kohler, Mandy, correct me if I'm wrong, to explore various options that would provide the most noise attenuated enclosure and Caterpillar by far provided with their custom enclosure, the most sound attenuated option for us. Mandy, if I missed anything from your evaluation of these options, please add.
Yes, we did a comparative bidding for Cummins and Caterpillar. So Cummins have a bigger footprint than Caterpillar. So this Caterpillar has a, has a compact in regards to physical dimension.
How about a clean solution like battery? Why wasn't that considered?
Yeah. So I'll be honest. So not just for this project, battery options are something that we are considering in general for our pump station applications.
So I think Los Altos would be a good first target right here.
Right. So, so one of the, one of the things, the main thing that we have to look for when we are looking for battery solution is the amount of power that we need. In this case, the number of the horsepower that we need for, to support both the pumps and the three phase power that we need would mean that we would need to install very large batteries and we will also need to have an inverter in place for that large scale. Mandy, I believe the pumps here are at about 50 horsepower and we have two pumps at this site.
I believe that we have three pumps. Is that correct?
Yeah. Yeah. So the, so the amount of battery storage we would need to support and provide backup power on such a large scale. Right now, it's again a cost and space prohibitive option. We explored this battery powered option at one of our facilities in Kern River Valley. But in those cases, the, the size of the pump horsepower, just to give you a comparison, is about one to three horsepower compared to 50 horsepower that we have for each of the pumps here.
It's just a question of battery size, actually. So it's, it's not horsepower either. That's not what the determining factor is, but it's okay. So my other questions, so that one, we don't have a really good answer to. You answered the question about fuel storage. It's actually within the building. Is that correct? Diesel fuel storage is actually in the building with the generator set. Is that correct?
So yeah.
And how many gallons of diesel will be stored on site?
We have the, the, we generally typically have a 24 hour sub base fuel tank. Mandy, if you can look at the generator cut sheet and the number of gallons.
Okay, I'm looking right now.
So one, one of the things I think design wise, why he's looking that up, you guys should think about is, you know, most power outages aren't for 24 hours, right? They're typically shorter. They're less than two, actually, I believe. And a battery big enough to run a system for a couple of hours is, you know, very, very doable. And then diesel is like the, the last resort, the way I see it. Anything new, I can't see people buying diesel generator sets today, to tell you the truth. It just doesn't make a lot of sense to me. Where there are better alternatives, cleaner alternatives, especially in a residential neighborhood. I mean, not only is this thing noisy, I mean, I know how noisy it is. It's also a polluter. And diesels are not clean. Batteries are clean. There's a huge difference there. So as you continue to think about providing emergency power in residential neighborhoods, I would think a pretty in-depth analysis ought to be done with other alternatives that are available today because there are better alternatives than, than diesels.
If I could weigh in a little bit, I'm the district manager for Los Altos. I also happen to manage the water district just up the peninsula, the Bear Gulch Water District, which is a sort of sister on the peninsula, very similar terrain, very similar areas. And I have to say that during, during the power outages that we've seen in the last few years, I can honestly say that there have been multiple occasions where power outages have lasted longer than 24 hours, multiple days, actually. And when you, when that happens, we need to make sure that that stays running.
Understood, but you have alternatives, right? For the short power outages, you can have a stationary battery. And then you can actually have a connection. You have a movable diesel generator today. Move that in when you have to, if something goes a longer period. These people have to listen to this thing run 15 minutes every week. It's just spewing out, you know, pollutants, even when you're testing the system. It just, it doesn't make a lot of sense to me. It, it did at one time, but it doesn't any longer. There's other alternatives.
Don, isn't it, this only, this is not only for emergency, this is only for wildfire? I'm okay.
They, they, yes, they are. However, you know, we will have to make sure that we, we test it and run it periodically.
It's an, it's an exercise program. It's part of the gen set. That's correct. How many gallons of diesel are you going to store there?
300 gallons.
It's a lot of fuel. Okay. I just want everybody to be aware of this alternatives and there is going to be a large amount of diesel stored on site. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Bishop. Jude, do you have any questions for the water?
Well, yeah, I had, well, getting back to my questions for Sean, I would like to have some consideration narrowing the range of testing. I would find it very intrusive if I'm the neighbors on the downhill side. Once again, I've been to the site. It's a very interesting site in terms of topography and whatnot, but the most two impacted neighbors, one, it's going to be right there on the street and I wouldn't want that thing kicking on at 7:30 in the morning. Because once again, I know what these generators sound and look like. So I was wondering if the district would be amenable to limiting the timeframe to 10 to two, Tuesday through Thursday. Would that be a, something acceptable to the district?
Absolutely. That doesn't, that's definitely can be done.
Okay. My, my second question is, was there any consideration to bury, given that it's closer to the street, it's taking out major trees? I know there's replacement trees, but once again, 10 feet off the property line is not very much. And once again, it's going to be sitting down close to the street. Was there anything else done to a solid fence or other thing to mitigate the visual impact and potential noise impact of this generator beyond the enclosure that you've shown us?
Jude, I could partially answer that. So they are proposing a six foot solid fence with two foot of lattice and then they are proposing evergreen screening along the frontage.
Yeah.
But to replace the chain link fence that they currently have.
Yeah. It gets back to the topography. It's an uphill site. I put a two foot or a six foot fence on the low side. The structure is actually going to be, I don't know if, is there any sightline diagrams of this? You know, from the street. Once again, the tank sits well above the street, correct?
Yeah. So I'm going to go and speak up to this. There was another location where we did do an enclosure, a wooden enclosure with lattice like ivy on it because people Um enclosure with um lattice like ivy on it, because people did not like the visual. From their homes, and it works, it worked pretty well, um that's off of Terrace. Avenue, and I'm thinking that's probably, if, I wish we had an example, but that does, we we will be able to. To enclose it to where it um will blend in with the the coverage that we have currently. To where it won't stand out quite so much as you saw in the photos provided earlier in the presentation.
Yeah, I'm just, I'm just looking at the drawings, once again. Yeah, it's very, there's no real, I guess there's kind of sectional drawings a little bit, but. Is there any code requirements in the water district from the generator from the actual storage tank?
Generally, the fire department requires a ten-feet setback from another um. Uh kind of electrical equipment uh or hazardous equipment. Commercial, yeah, substances, so in this case, we have enough clearance from the water tank. Um and the other sites uh that meet those those requirements. We also have, uh we also meet the national electric code requirements uh based on the location of the generator. And and regarding the the fencing, I think like like Melinda um said, we will be able to provide a similar. Uh lattice kind of fence on the in the street side of the the generator also if required with trellis.
That was, I guess my question is, was there any consideration to put it ten feet away? From. The tank. Instead of. The generator is ten feet from the property line, correct? The pad appears to be five feet from the property line, correct? Is the fence at the property line, or I guess there's three, four trees shown? So is is the fence, is the six-foot fence at the property line?
I believe so.
Okay, and just looking at the grade differential. What's the grade at the property line versus the grade at the generator enclosure? Think your pad is at three oh eight. Your fence is at what? Three oh five, three oh six?
Mandy, would you be able to look at the grading plan and provide that information?
Hmm, yes, uh. Give me uh one second.
Yeah, I think your section CC kind of shows. The fence and the generator appears to be, I don't know, five, six feet taller than the fence. CC on uh.
That is correct.
Yeah.
There's a, there's a existing uh retaining wall, this one is just to maintain the. The the grading. For the tank, for the existing tank. And. Yeah, we still need to have enough clearance here when whenever we maintain the generator. And when we open the uh. Panel in the generator.
And and getting back to the neighbors, have you had any conversations with those two downhill neighbors?
I've had um interaction with the neighbors in past projects, and I I have not had any concerns. Or any calls in regards to concerning or concerns in regards to the gin set.
Okay, but Dee, I'm I'm talking about specifically to the two neighbors. Have you had direct conversations with them, informing them that there's going to be a generator? That's operating weekly, that they're gonna visibly see from their house. Just curious if those, that outreach has been done.
No, it has not, besides just posting the signage.
Got it, okay. Um and then just out of curiosity, getting back to alternatives, is there any? Examples that cow water, first of all, I love my water, I love cow water.
Thank you.
So I appreciate what you guys are doing, I just just want to make you aware, we have. It's it's part of our role here in the city is to make sure that the concerns of the neighbors are addressed. And the neighbors are, those concerns are not only visual, but they're also acoustical. So that's why we're, we're not, we're not trying to give you a hard time, but we're just. You know, we don't want something to be built and then get complaints after the fact, so we're asking these questions. As part of due diligence and potentially as a way to improve what's been proposed. So we totally support what you're proposing. Um but anyhow, I I, this is more from our commentary at the end, but. Anyhow, thank you for what you do in in providing clean water. So so just wrapping up Frank's question, has the district ever used solar panels on top of these tanks? There seems to be a lot of flat area up there that would make sense to get some solar up there to potentially. Operate some some pumps.
And I can answer that uh for the, from uh from the electrical engineering point of view. Uh we do have some sites um in um all over California in patches where we use solar powered. Uh equipment, but that is mostly for controls, most of our RTU SCADA equipment. Um the like simple, simple instrumentation like level transducers or pressure transducers can generally run off of. A solar powered uh panel. For um installations that require three-phase power, larger horsepower, just the kilowatt hours of energy we need. Uh tools to keep the pumps running would would need a larger number of batteries needed would be larger. Uh battery size needed would be larger, uh solar panels, if it's a solar option, then those solar uh panels need need to be larger. And then they, we have to get the inverters uh because of conversion from DC to AC. So just the arrangement, the um space restrictions, cost restrictions. Right now, limit us um into uh exploring uh further for larger pump stations. But definitely, we explore the solar-powered uh small panels to run our SCADA system and small uh instrumentation equipment. Um at our facilities.
Okay, thank you. Sam, do you have any questions for uh Water District?
I do not.
Okay, I have uh three. Uh I'll start with uh one that Jude sort of hinted to. I know in a couple areas around here that have these type of things, not necessarily for the power. Uh but when they they do uh make noise or whatnot. They try to set up the time where they test the devices to like a Tuesday between one and two. Uh so super narrow defined. You know, it's every week at the, between that hour, that way the neighbors can plan out, so I would actually ask. To have that number of time reduced down to a particular day and a particular maybe hour window or two-hour window. Um is there any operational issue that would make that not feasible?
There would be no operational issue if you ask that.
Okay, yeah, because I think, you know, if you've got small kids or whatever, put them down for naptime, you know, every day. Tuesday at noon, it's gonna be fifteen minutes, and you know, you 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 can adjust around that. Um given what the benefit is of having that there. Um second question is, given that the container is a custom-made. Device, or it appears in the the uh project, is there any way to make it even quieter? Um or is that cost prohibitive? And what would be the delta between what the the sound enclosure is now to a custom-made one? That might be, uh you know, uh twenty percent better. To get the numbers down lower.
I I can, I can answer that. Uh we we have a another option, uh the one we propose is sixty-three dB. The other option is fifty-four, but the one has a huge footprint now. So it's going to uh, it's going to uh, it's not going to comply with the. With ordinances, if we're going to use that, it's a bigger, I think it's it's twice. Twice as big, the one we propose.
So you're saying to have something less than the sixty-eight, it's the the physical unit is twice as large?
Yes.
Or maybe, okay, so then the footprint would be, okay, it's not like adding, and I don't know how these things are built, you know. It's eleven and a half feet, you add six fifths, uh six inches of insulation, you're under the twelve-foot cap. And it makes it, you know, X amount quieter, but it's not as simple as that.
That is correct.
Okay, um and then lastly, getting back to um. That particular unit, um is it pre-built with fire suppression? Should something go wrong with the diesel gas and all of that? That it has a sprinkler system or something like that, that would put it out. Uh on its own, or is that something that's not built into the system?
I can answer that again, it's not built in, but we have uh, we have a uh safety uh controls for that. Does the the tank is uh sub dual tank, we have a sensor for that if there's any. Uh fuel leak, we have uh emergency stop in the generator, and we have a remote stop. And then for 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 the generator, uh for for this uh District of Los Altos, we always install a uh. Remote stop and a fire extinguisher uh visible to uh fire marshal whenever, if there's any emergency.
Okay, and when you run the test, is there someone physically there to flip a button on and flip a button off? Or is it remote?
Uh, remote is, what I mean by remote is really far from the generator, from the equipment, and we also have. But we can also have, we can also have a capability to do that remotely.
I, Mandy, I think the question is whether when we test the generator for maintenance purposes, do we do it remotely? Or there is uh physically someone present at the site performing the the testing. And Melinda, I don't want to speak for you, but I believe you do have uh an operator on site performing the testing and logging the number of hours. You are operating that, four minutes, you are operating the unit, correct?
Actually, it's scheduled, you time it, and it's scheduled to um run weekly on its own. But what, let me go ahead and speak to where our safety is wise, is it's tied into our SCADA, and I can literally see. If there's an alarm that comes across to us via phone or on my iPad, unto our operators, if there's a leak, if there's an issue. Uh there's a red light on the gin set, and then it sends out a signal to SCADA, then we send someone out there to check to see what the problem is. And 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 address whatever if necessary.
Have you had any, any failures in the past of this type of system specifically related to fire?
No. No, but I will say the alarms work, so when they do install it, we do run tests, and we make sure that we can see it on our SCADA. And so we'll run um alarms, just to make sure we can get the various alarms, i.e. leaks, or if there's a diesel issue. Or if it's not running properly, or if it if it's um having some sort of issue, then we'll have it maintained. And have our EMT or electro- electrician address any issues along with an operator.
Okay, Jude, you have another question? Well, along along the lines and uh getting back, I'm not certain necessarily, well, I'm concerned about fire, obviously, but. Uh spillage of the diesel fuel, I don't see in any of the details any provision for containment of. You know, I I drive by the big tanks in Vallejo, and there's a pool in case one of the tanks breaks, and. You know, the diesel can be captured, um is that a concern on these units? Uh, you know, they're gonna, if somebody's gonna, how often do they come by and fill them with diesel fuel? Is that monthly, weekly?
It's not very often, honestly, um as long as there's not any longstanding power outages, it's actually very rare. Um depending on what we're dealing with, uh also, that's a double containment storage, I've never had any diesel leak issues. With any of these, um and we've had our first one installed back in two thousand eight at OK. Um that's one of the older ones, never had any kind of issues in regards to actual diesel leaks of any form.
But even when they're filling it, it's.
So Melinda, if I if I may add, we, like Melinda said, we have a double containment on the on the primary tank. And then we have a secondary uh containment on it, while filling it, we have a five, a five-gallon uh spill containment unit. So if there is uh happens to be a spill, it is contained in that five-gallon bucket. We also have alarms and sensors that determine the tank overfill or tank leak alarm, which goes directly to our SCADA. Um when we commission the units at the, in the beginning, when they are installed, we uh the, they are tested in the factory by the. Uh by the vendor uh for any pressure uh testing and leaks. Um and then once they are installed, they are also pressure tested by the vendor again. Uh in the presence of uh fire department to ensure that there are no leaks in the tank. Um so the this, the unit is not placed in service until those uh pressure leak tests are are performed.
Good to hear, thank you. Great, commissioners, any further questions for the Water District?
None.
Okay, we'll go ahead and close that portion. Uh Sean, do we have uh any public comment? It sounded like we didn't, but this would be the time.
Um is there, i- i- if there is any member of the public who would like to speak, uh please raise your hand. If you cannot raise your hand, please unmute yourself and provide us your name, which is only an option.
I don't see anything.
I do not see, except there, I don't know if it's Commissioner four one five, five five three zero four one two. Is that a member of the public who'd like to speak? I do not have anybody that's raised your hand who or who wishes to speak on the item.
Okay, great, we'll go ahead and close public comment, um commissioners, we'll begin our deliberations, discussions. Uh who would like to start? Go ahead, Jude. Well, yeah, my my primary concern is noise, clearly, and um. Uh at a minimum, I would like to see the timeframe of testing narrowed. Uh ten to two, Tuesday through Thursday, non-holiday, you know, program it that way. Um I think my concern about spillage has been addressed. Uh I understand the challenge with backup and having these pumps, pumps run in a crisis. So given that it's an essential service, I think there is some kind of necessity and hardship that would be worthy. Of granting the variance, uh saying that, you know, I don't think there's quite enough done yet to. Screen the unit from the street, uh you know, there is, once again, some diagrams, but uh. We've seen what a unit looks like, but it would have been nice to see. Uh you know, a nice rendering of what this looks like in place when the foliage is grown in. But once again, I love my water, I love cow water, and um I don't want to be a hindrance. But I I am concerned about what the neighbors, specifically the two downhill neighbors are gonna think of this when it does get installed. So I'm kind of on the fence at this point, without further conditions, but once again, at a minimum. Limiting the timeframe with testing. Sam?
Yeah, I I like the project and like like the water company. And I'm getting a rebate for my lawn takeout, so I'm feeling very comfortable with the water company. Um I think you should set a specific time. Uh many places, there are periodic, weekly or twice a week. Tsunami warnings and other kinds of things that are at a predictable time, I think if you had a predictable time. That would, that would go a long way to the neighbors understanding that, and it wouldn't be a surprise each time it came out. So that would be my recommendation, eleven thirty every Tuesday, something like that.
Frank?
Well, you could probably guess I'm not in favor of the project. I think there are far better current solutions available that haven't been discussed or explored. And Jude mentions, excuse me, noise, but there's also the physical pollution of a diesel engine. And Jude mentions, excuse me, noise, but there's also the physical pollution of a diesel engine of this size running every week. And then running, you know, in the case of some type of emergency. I think a a system, I think the water company should actually look much further into this, a system that's battery based. If you put solar panels on the tank, that would be great, but you charge the batteries typically from the grid for the size battery that you're going to need to do what you're going to need to do here. And then have that for the the typical, you know, power outage, which, like I say, is less than two hours. For anything that's beyond that, roll in one of your generator sets then, then run the dirty thing because. You know, there has been an earthquake and it needs to run for a week, I mean, I'm okay with that. But generally speaking, it just, it doesn't make any sense today with the technology that's available. So I'm a no.
Okay. Um. I think I'm in favor. Um. Only in the sense that. I I look at it more, uh, well, to some extent, and I'm not uh. Own any stock or anything in the Water District or however they're run. Um. Most companies want to do stuff the cheapest way around. Um, to save money and get the stuff put in, I don't think this is the case, um. I'm not a huge fan of the diesel, but I think it will be run at a limited time. Um, I know some properties up in the hills who have. This type of thing. Um. I won't say which specific properties, but um that they have. Uh diesel generators and they do run them. You know, for fifteen, twenty minutes uh a day uh once every. Like it's two weeks or something like that. Um, and they seem to work fine, the pollution aspect isn't that great. Um. But I think, given the alternatives of what we have, and I don't know enough about the electrical stuff. Um, the solar panels and batteries and that type of thing to say, yeah. Let's hold out and have them do that, it would be nice to have. Maybe something that shows what the cost of a. Uh, battery powered system would be versus the cost of what this system is. Um. And, you know, over a five or ten year window. Uh, but we don't have that, I think we're here to judge whether it works or not and how much it affects our our city. Um, I would hate um to have, you know, a situation where we do have a. Need for it and then have them try to truck in. A thing and not be able to get it in for one reason or another and the. Even though it's a minute. Possibility that happens. You know, it probably still can happen, so um. I would want to have a specific time and date that this is run weekly, so the neighbors can. Work around that or at least know that it's coming. Um, and that they're aware, um. But I would support the project as it is. Do we have, uh, well, any further comments on this?
Hey, hey, David, it's Frank, so just just a couple of things, just just so you can hear them. The 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 diesels that you have up in these uh larger homes in Los Altos Hills, they're small compared to what this is. But this is, this is a commercial generator they're putting there, this isn't a house generator. At all, um, it's loud. And it pollutes, man, I just got to be totally clear about this, people will not be happy when this. This thing is installed, and I also point out, I think it was brought up earlier, there's been no outreach done to the two adjacent or across the street neighbors. That are going to have to live with this machine once it uh, once it lands and it's in installed there. And to the water company, I'm sure uh you will be working, I've worked on it, as some of you do know, I've worked on a number of pretty large projects um. For the state of California, there there's a lot of technology that could be used, I hope the water company. Will start to think about the technology that's in the market. And and at least do a trial of something that's different than what you're proposing here, because what what we're looking at is it it's ten, twenty year old technology. And and then you're going to be storing three hundred gallons of diesel in a residential neighborhood, which is less than ideal, I have to just say that it is, it's just not a good. It's not a good way to move forward, given what we have uh in the market today, so. Just so you hear me out fully, I'm still a no.
No, I, you know, from a a clean air. Prospect that, you know, I I agree with you and the technology should be used, I just don't know. Enough myself in my background to say, yeah. That we send them back to the drawing board and. You know, four, six or however weeks it takes for them to to get that, whether.
Well, remember, though, they have no emergency power there at all today, there's nothing there.
Correct.
What's the rush? Quite honest, what's what's the rush, they if something goes wrong, they bring a generator to the site, that's how they operate today. What you're buying here is something that's going to be permanent and installed. And I'm just saying there's better solutions in the market and there's no rush to do this that I see, I mean, unless somebody can tell me wrong.
To the chair, if I could.
Yes. Go ahead.
So, um. So the issue of of uh. Of emissions um is addressed under California Environmental Quality Act. Under CEQA, this project is exempt from environmental review. There are a series of exceptions that could qualify it, but none of them encapsulate the issues that are being raised by Commissioner Bishop. Um, this project, due to being a negligible expansion of an existing public utility service site, is exempt from CEQA. The city does have a climate action plan, but the climate action plan does not address the issue of diesel generators. So there is not an existing city council policy. Addressing diesel generators um. Or specifically addressing to generators at public sites, um. And and while. If if you do formulate. A continuance, it's important to recognize that the variance findings specify that you have to provide evidence in the record. If you're going to deny the project, supporting why it would not meet health, safety, why it would be detrimental to health, safety or welfare of persons. If you go down that path, staff would highly recommend that you continue the items so that staff could. Meet with the city attorney to make sure that we provide that information to you at a future meeting. But we do believe currently, based on the exemption that it qualifies for, it is exempt from review under CEQA.
Okay, thank you, Sean. Uh, Amy. Jude. Go ahead.
Yeah, so I I'm just, once again, it's a variance, we're we're looking for hardship. Uh, and once again, for comparison purposes. If. If I had a neighbor who asked for a variance to put a generator in their front yard directly across from my street. Without my knowledge, and then for that generator. Not not a propane or natural gas generator. Uh, diesel generator reoperating once a week, uh, for lack of a better word, I'd be very upset. And so to me. Once again, it goes back to. Have the neighbors down, and we stress this, and actually, part of what the. Design Review Commission over the last years to make the process better for all is we've encouraged and stressed that there be outreach. And at a minimum. You know, I would, if I were to make a motion, I would move that. The water district, once again, I love my water, but. Do the neighbors surrounding this project know they're going to get a diesel generator showing up ten feet off the property line that's going to operate once a week?
You know, I I I hear you guys and I will definitely, this is Melinda, I will make sure and touch bases face to face with them and then I will. Ask them what time they would like to see them run.
Okay.
Well, I will, I will do it myself, so I make sure that we are being good neighbors.
Would you be comfortable with a condition? Not a condition, but a continuance for us to see those letters, or at least your interaction with them. Knowing that once again, we're granting a variance for setback. And I don't, once again, I don't know the noise issue, Sean, I don't know the pollution CEQA, but we're here to grant a variance for setback, correct? Is that what we're here for?
Yes, correct, you're you're here for a a variance for reduction in the setback.
Okay, so if that's what we're here to do and we can't. Comment on CEQA because it's exempt, then to me. Once again, I would at least want notification. Not a sign, but outreach to the neighbors that this is going to occur. Because if it were me. I'd be very upset. And I know it's our water, but it is, it is an issue that I think all should be aware of.
Absolutely, that's fair enough, I should have gone ahead and said, any projects that we do, we do communicate with the neighbors. This one's been pending for a while, I'm just not sure at this point if there was a letter or if it was just a conversation. So what I'm basically saying, which Cal water, we always operate in this manner, especially because they are our neighbors and we're trying to. Keep, you know, have an open dialogue and be very transparent in what we're trying to do. I myself will make sure and go myself and speak to each one of them, not just the two on either side, but across the street also, just to make sure, because I I usually do that always, but um this was a. Totally different, you know, request here, this was a variance, like you said. Um, but we always do communicate with our neighbors with any projects that are happening in the neighborhoods, so I will just let you know that I will make sure and take care of that.
Okay, and Sean, can I get clarification, how long has that sign been out, you said it was several months, or did I get that incorrect?
No, I um. I would have to look for the posting, one second, let me um.
But like the big placard, I thought you had said, and maybe I misinterpreted what you had said.
I I would have to find it, I could find it and I could, let me look in my emails one second, I'm sorry. It. So what I what I do find is it was. That they sent. They sent us proof of. The posting or of it at June sixth approximately, I I could be off by a number of days, but June sixth is about a month. I can't find, I I can always get back to you on that, I can try to find that document, usually they send us pictures.
Yeah, that's, I I thought it had been, I thought in your comments at the beginning, it had been posted for.
Yeah, I may have been wrong, I'm trying to find it, I'm sorry.
It looks like there were two, there was one that was a big placard. That was, you know, the probably two by three foot and then one was like an eight and a half by eleven.
Yeah, I would have to find it, we get, we've had a lot of interaction by email with them, so I'm sorry, I don't have access to it, I apologize.
No worries, um. So let's, let's try to move this forward. Do we have any further discussion on the item, and if not, do we have a motion? Jude, did you want to go forward with the?
Yeah.
You were contemplating.
Yeah, so um. So my motion is simple, I've moved to continue. Sorry. Uh, V twenty one dash zero zero three and D R twenty two dash zero zero six seven. Uh, Cal Water District Project at ten nine zero zero between lane. Uh, with the further direction is to one. Out we uh applicant shall. Uh, provide direct outreach to each adjacent property owner, specifically the down here downhill neighbors across the street. And on the side of the property line to make them aware. Of what's going to happen, um. And then to uh the applicant come back with an operational schedule. Uh, for testing that is somewhere between ten and two. Tuesday through Thursday during the week, uh, with the exception of holidays. And then uh, three, I would also. Uh, provide or encourage the applicant to look at. Reducing the pad elevation of the structure to lower it so that it does not loom over the streets. Um, right now, it's going to be sixteen feet above the street level, and I don't think. Uh, any fence line is gonna uh obscure this uh structure. Um, so a better. Rendering or somewhere, something to help us understand what this is going to look like and. Uh. If there's any additional acoustical barriers provided, help us understand what what that's going to look like. So that would be my motion.
Second. So Sean, did you get all of that? Looks like three items.
So I have that the applicant shall conduct direct outreach to adjacent properties, including owners across the street, that the applicant shall return with an operational schedule for testing between ten AM to two PM. Tuesday to Thursday, except holidays, encourage applicant reduce the pad elevation. To avoid looming over the street, provide a rendering of the structure from the street frontage, and then the last element of it, what was the last element?
I I think that was it, just.
Okay.
I think that your goal is to lower it in such a way that the visual impact being ten feet off the street. Uh, both visually and acoustically is.
Okay.
Uh mitigated.
Okay, and we have, Sam, you have a second on that, is that?
I do.
Do, okay, let's go ahead and take a vote. Frank?
I'm a nay.
Sam?
I.
Jude?
I.
I also vote in favor, um, and a side comment, I would. Uh. Request that the uh. Water District come with a even a tighter timeframe uh that Sam and I had discussed, but we're okay with the. The initial, uh, so it passes for a continuance, three to one. Um. Side. Bar, I guess, on this, uh, Sean is. You know, next meeting, two of us will be gone. Minimum. Um. Is that, is three a uh? Enough to? Do a, I mean.
At the next, at the uh, at the, under the agenda, um. I, at the end of the meeting, we could talk about the uh future meetings and and what will occur and whether they'll be, they'll occur or be canceled.
Okay. We'll go ahead and then move on to uh item number four. S C twenty one dash zero zero four seven, the property located at two sixty five Mount Hamilton Avenue. Uh, Sean, you're up again.
Um. Uh, good evening, uh Chair Blockus and Commissioners, uh, the project for for you is a designer view application for. A hundred ninety nine square foot first story and eighty nine square foot second story addition to an existing two-story house. Always, okay, there we go, uh, the subject property is located on Mount Hamilton at the intersection with Los Altos Avenue, the neighborhood along uh. Hamilton Avenue is considered consistent character as defined the city's residential design guidelines. Um, this building here at the corner is the subject site. The existing house is not conforming due to having a twenty three point five foot front yard setback where twenty five feet is required. Based on the R one ten standards, the houses also are conforming along the rear property line doing, due to having a fourteen point two five foot setback. Where the standard is twenty five feet. Uh, the zoning code does allow non-conforming setbacks to remain, um, and non-conformities remain. Uh, if no more than fifty percent of the floor is being replaced or rebuilt, uh, the applicant uh is complying with that requirement. Um, and so the non-conformity, uh, non-conformities can exist, continue to exist. Ah. Oh, I don't know what happened here, there we go, the um. At the, at the first floor, the applicant is for proposing a hundred ninety nine square foot addition, the front elevation includes eighty eight square feet. First floor addition includes a portion of an existing recessed porch, this is highlighted here in red in the front. Uh, the rear elevation includes a hundred and fifteen square foot addition here along the rear. Um, that includes an addition for an open concept family room with a kitchen and nook. Um, this on the left side is existing floor plan. Um, which was separated into uh individual rooms and now is more of an open concept living style. And and we had an existing covered porch here in the front. And, and we had an existing covered porch here in the front previously existing and proposed. At the second story, existing second story, the applicant is proposing to demolish 312 square feet located here. This is the existing second floor. They're looking at demolishing this existing portion of the structure. And is reflected in the proposed, it is proposed to be eliminated. They do propose an 89 square foot addition. This will be for a bathroom and that's located here in the front of the structure. Along the street frontage. The project staff believes is a minor first story, second story addition with window changes to an existing two-story house. Wall plate heights, roof heights, overall height are being maintained. The proposed additions are well integrated into the simple hip forms of the structure. The roof is designed to be integrated into the roof forms in both front and rear. First and second story additions appear well-integrated. The project includes significant changes of the roof form due to the demolition of the 312 square feet. And the existing second story roof form consists of hip roof forms that run parallel to the rear of the structure. And it will be integrated into the existing roof form. The project proposes two new gable roof forms along the frontage, which is shown in the upper elevation at top. At for a defined entry and the roof form is compatible staff leaves with the overall house design and with existing similar forms in the neighborhood. Overall, the changes of the roof form appear to be compatible in scale and form to the existing neighborhood context. The interior window has one window for bedroom three that has a window sill height of three foot, two inches. Staff, staff is concerned with potential privacy concerns due to the lower sill height of the window. Per page 14 of the residential design guidelines is generally recommended that second floor side yard window should be no larger than the UBC minimum sizes and, and no more than the number required for egress or light or ventilation requirements. Staff proposed a condition approval number two A that addresses the proposed sill heights that while allowing the bedroom number three to maintain building code standards for egress. The rear elevation proposes the addition of one medium sized two panel window with four foot eight inch sill heights due to the window sizes and the sill heights. Staff does believe that the windows do, staff does not believe the windows create potential privacy impacts. Staff does support the project and recommends approval. This concludes staff's presentation. Thank you.
Great. Thank you, Sean. Commissioners, any questions for staff?
None.
Frank or Jude, any questions?
Frank has none.
All right, just one quick one. Sean, for your understanding, bedroom three, as it currently exists. That bedroom has a window, but it doesn't meet building code egress, correct?
One second, sorry. No, my concern, so let me, sorry, I can't get to the. No, I, I don't believe that's my concern. My concern was with the window height, we want to make sure that it, that the that the height of the sill is no greater than what's required per code. That we have a no sill height greater, lower than, than what's necessary. So that was the necessity for the condition.
Okay, but the, but the window they're proposing meets egress, correct?
Yes, currently it does, yes.
And it's, but it's bigger than what's currently there, correct? Which?
Yes, correct.
Which, which does not need egress. According to elevation B on existing interior side elevation, that is not an egress window in bedroom three.
Correct.
Okay, thank you. Sorry.
Okay, I don't think there are any more commissioner questions, so let's go to the applicant. Or the architect for the applicant.
Hello, can you guys hear me?
Yes.
Hello, good, good evening, everybody. My name's Amon Delay and I'm the designer for the project. Sean, pretty much, you know, I was going to give a brief summary, but he did better than me. But if you guys have any questions, please feel free to ask.
Okay, so you don't have any formal presentation, but are available for questions?
Yes.
Okay, and does the, is the owner present? Want to say anything or no?
Yeah, this is Brad Koshan. I'm here. Yeah, the only thing I want to say is that we're kind of reconfiguring the footage that we have in the house. As Sean mentioned, we're removing part of the second floor, which was more or less like a second family room, but it was not very usable. And moving that square footage to a bathroom on the second floor and then the front and the back of the house to create a bigger space for a bigger kitchen and a bigger family room. And then obviously, as part of this, we would also want to make sure that the, the outside of the house becomes updated, the roof has to change. So not a major remodeling, but something that I think would be good for, for us and also for the neighborhood in terms of the look and feel from the outside.
If I may, I could share an exterior rendering. I'm not sure, Sean, if you have that. I could share screen with the, with the rendering that we have.
I do not believe I have the rendering, but let me make sure you can share. One second. Yes, you can share now if you'd like.
So this is, you know, like a color chart showing all the exterior materials that you know, they're trying to go for. We're trying to blend in materials like siding, stucco and stone. Just to, you know, add more interest. There's a new porch that's been added just to, you know. The existing porch is not very welcoming. The, the new porch is more, you know, in the center. The height and the overall mass of the house is in keeping with, you know, the neighborhood. Both the plate heights for the first and the second floor are kept at eight feet. So just let me know if any questions on that.
No questions.
Okay, Commissioners, any questions for the applicant? So Sam has none. Jude or Frank, any?
I'm good.
Good.
Okay, we'll go ahead and close that. Sean, do we have any public comment on this?
Um, second, let me. Sorry, I'm trying to get to the. There we go. Is I, if, if there's a member of the public who would like to speak on the item, please raise your hand. If you're not able to raise your hand, please unmute yourself and provide your name. Providing your name is only optional. I do not see any members of the public raising their hand or unmuting themselves. So we do not have any members of the public who like to speak on the item.
Okay, we'll go ahead and close public comment and have our discussion. Sam, do you want to go ahead and start on this one?
Yeah, no, I, I know the house and I think the changes are, are good. And so I'm in favor.
Okay, Frank?
No, I'm in favor of the project as it is.
Jude?
Similar, I think it's a substantial improvement from what's currently there. And given the window in bedroom three is gonna now meet building code egress, I am okay with that addition. And being out there, there are two screen trees along that property line with the Los Altos Avenue neighbor. So I think any privacy concerns are going to be diminished by those trees. And when you couple that with the fact that they're removing two windows in the game room and bathroom. I think it's a substantial increase in privacy for the adjacent neighbor. So in my opinion, this meets the intent of the design guidelines.
I support it as well. So do we have a motion?
I'll, I'll make the motion that we approve SC 21 dash 0047 at 265 Mount Hamilton. For the conditions. For the conditions stated.
Do I have a second?
Frank will second.
We have a motion second. Let's go ahead and vote. Commissioner Curry?
I.
Commissioner Bishop?
I.
Commissioner Harding?
I.
And Chair Blockus approves it as well with an I, so it passes 4 to 0. Congratulations.
Thank you, everyone.
We will move on to our last item, which is item five SC 21 dash 0053. Sean, I received a direct message. Did you get that on? In regards to item number two? From the, from, it appears to be the applicant wondering why it was discussed. They're on, I think they're on the line.
Yeah, hi, this is Susan Stick. That was me. On your agenda, it's listed as item one.
So.
So I thought maybe it would be first, but be that as it may, you just mentioned that you're working on another one that's last. So did you skip ours?
So which property are you?
2161 via Escolera.
Yeah, that was on the consent calendar, which was approved. So Sean, correct me if I'm incorrect, but that means that their project was approved.
Correct. Your, the item was not removed from the consent item. And when you approved it, you, you proved that particular project without any discussion.
Yeah. So Susan, your project has been approved and you can now enjoy the rest of your evening. Congratulations.
Great. Thanks very much. Bye bye.
Sorry for the confusion.
No, we thank you and we love Cal Water also.
Thank you.
Thanks, guys. Appreciate it.
Okay, we'll move on now to item five again. SC 21 dash 0053, the property to eat 1848 fallen leaf. Sean, can you give us a staff report, please?
Good, good evening again, Chair Blocks Commissioners. The project for you tonight is a designer view application for a two-story addition to an existing one-story house. The project is a 449 square foot addition. Let me see if it'll, again, here we go. This slide provides us rendering of the proposed second story addition. It is included in your packet tonight. The subject property is located in a consistent character neighborhood. This is slide A10, your neighborhood context map. Property is located in a fallen leaf between Holt Avenue and on far, let me see, it's on, sorry, I can't think. Property is located on fallen leaf between Holt Avenue, Atlantis Lane. The majority of the single family homes in the neighborhood are older one-story ranch-style homes with lower plate heights, simple roof forms, rustic materials, residents are similar amassing and lower in scale. As outlined in the slide above, which is the site plan, it shows the footprint of the second story, which is located here in the center. Again, it's a 449 square foot addition. The project does meet the development standard for the R110 district. It does meet the front and side second story setbacks and the rear setbacks and does comply with the daylight plan. This, oh, I don't know what happened there. I'm sorry. The second story addition will allow the addition of a bedroom number four stairs and bathroom number two and a balcony. The existing house has a traditional ranch-style architectural style with hip and cable roof forms. And of the overall facade has been maintained to minimize the impact of the two-story addition to the overall form. The lower scale 449 square foot addition is located at the center of the residence in front of the primary ridge line. The project has low eve lines, which staff believes is appropriate in keeping with a lower profile of the home and is in keeping with surrounding neighborhood, neighboring properties. One second. On the south elevation or left side of the property, there are no proposed windows on the second story. And therefore there are no potential privacy act impacts from windows. On the right elevation, there is one window in bathroom number two with a five-foot sill height. Due to the small size of the window and the sill height, staff believes it does not create potential privacy issues. On the rear elevation, the second story, there is a French door with two side lights exiting from bedroom, bedroom to the balcony. The balcony is approximately 6.1 feet to 21.3 feet wide with a depth between four to 11 and three quarters feet in depth. Primarily faces the side and rear yard. Staff, as noted in the report, believes that the balcony does not comply with the minimum maximum four-foot depth standards of the residential design guidelines. And the result is active, more active in nature. Without a reduction, the size of the balcony to limit its potential as an active use, the project does not appear to meet the design findings in regards to potential privacy impacts. As designed, the balcony is set back 24 feet from the left property line, 30 and a half feet from the right side and 56 and three quarters from the rear. With existing and proposed evergreen screening, there are, continue to be partial views to adjacent properties. To meet the findings related to privacy, staff does recommend condition approval to A to reduce the depth of the second story balcony to maximum depth of four feet. And to ensure that no reasonable level of privacy and to ensure that a reasonable level of privacy is maintained, a condition number two B has been added to incorporate fast-growing evergreen screening along the side and rear to fill in unscreened portions of the property. As designed with the recommended condition, staff believes it could meet the designer view findings in relation to privacy. Do the scope of the work being limited to a 449 square foot, a second story addition solely at the second story. The applicant did not provide a detailed landscape plan for the relandscaping, landscaping of the entire site. This landscape plan reflects the project will preserve existing shrubs and ground cover throughout the site. If the applicant does rehabilitate more than 2,500 square feet of landscaping. A condition does require that the project comply with the water efficiency and landscape ordinance consistent with the city's code and overall staff does believe the existing and proposed landscaping meets the intent of the city's landscape requirements and the street tree guidelines. Staff does support the project and recommends approval. This concludes staff's presentation. Unless there are any questions, thank you.
Great, thank you, Sean. Commissioners, any questions for staff?
None.
None.
Frank?
None, as long as the balcony is addressed. No questions, yes.
Yeah, the only question, Sean, that I had for you was, was there any discussion with the applicant in regards to replacing the fencing?
No, no, I, no, I did not have any discussion with them, but they are present and you can potentially raise that issue with me.
Okay. Thank you. If the applicant or the applicant's architect would like to say a few words, have a presentation, now is your time.
This is Priyanka Benji. I am the architect designer on this project.
Excuse me, this is, I'm sorry to interrupt. You're coming through quite muted.
Can you hear me properly now?
I get kind of like an echo. Am I the only one, Commissioners?
No, no, you're not.
Okay.
Okay, I'm trying again. Can you, is it better?
That is better.
It's, yeah, it's a little better.
Okay, I am Priyanka Benji. I am the architectural designer on the project. And Sean has explained the project very well. Questions?
Your owner want to say anything?
I don't know. If, if you have any specific questions, we can support with. Yeah, but.
Okay, so we'll go ahead and, and any questions, Commissioners? For the architect?
I have a few.
Okay, Jude, go ahead.
Yeah, on A2.02. Yeah, uh, on A two point zero two, uh, the French doors in the back, both in the the primary, as they say nowadays, uh, and also whatever room that is on the lower right are shown as divided light windows. Is that a drafting issue or are they truly going to be divided light windows?
On the lower side, uh, on the right side, they're saying that's the the master bedroom.
Yes, you're showing divided light windows, which is out of character with your single pane windows throughout the house. Is that a drafting issue or is that truly what your intent is?
That's what we are proposing.
Okay.
Okay, and then on your balcony, your balcony, uh, it's kind of awkward. Excuse me, I'm hearing some feedback there. Is somebody talking? Thanks. On your balcony, did you consider a six-foot-high screen wall? On the, I guess it would be the see if I got it north there on the north side to you have a roof line and a railing. I don't know what exactly that's gonna look like, but if you put a screen wall there, you would alleviate any concerns of privacy impact on your neighbor to the right. Was that a consideration?
Uh, we did, uh, basically we're proposing some trees to screen, so we thought that the wall won't be necessary. So, yeah, we are screening it with trees. The neighbors will not have any issues.
Do the do the screens screen any acoustical issues or light issues?
Uh, sorry, I didn't understand the question.
Sound.
Yeah, yeah, I get that about a sound issue on our website. On the
Right, on the right side.
Um, no.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions for the applicant?
Frank will ask about the balcony.
Okay, Frank.
So is the architect and the owner agreeable to reduce the size of the balcony to as described in the uh, the documents that we received from the city?
Yes, um, I'm the owner here. Um, I'm okay. I'm fine with the commission's recommendations.
Sorry, thank you.
Yeah, I'll ask my my one question about replacing the fencing. You got a five-foot fence in and a lot of areas it needs repair.
Yes, uh, yes. So we are definitely looking at replacing all of them. Um, once we start with the project, that's
And and what were you gonna put in replacement?
Oh, uh, we haven't gone this far yet, that what we want. We definitely know that we want to replace it because when we got the house, um, it was all covered in shrubs. The whole fence was covered in shrubs and we could not see it. And when we started cleaning it up, we realized that the fence was in bad shape. So for now, I am, it is, yeah, the plan is there for definitely to replace all the fence. But I, we didn't get that far to think with what material.
Are you thinking of a five-foot with one-foot lattice or a six with one-foot lattice or something completely different?
Uh, no, the same as, you know, uh, adhering to city guidelines. So, yeah, me five foot and uh, one foot lattice.
Okay. Thank you. Any other questions for the applicant or their architect? I think we've covered it. Okay, we'll go ahead and, uh, Sean, do we have any public comment on this item that you're aware of?
Um, I do not see any hands raised. If there's any member of the public who'd like to speak on the item, um, please raise your hand or mute yourself and provide us your name. Providing your name is only an option, not required. Uh, there appears to be nobody. Everybody, I believe, on the list is, uh, the applicant or the owner. So there's no member of the public still.
Okay. Commissioners discussion on this. Uh, Jude, you want to begin on this one?
Uh, sure. Well, it's it's a relatively straightforward project in my view. Um, I am curious about this window selection, but I'll leave that to the designer to make that choice because this it's much more contemporary home and to have divided light windows seems odd. But I'll let them make that final determination. My only, my only question and issue is the balcony. And, you know, in terms of balconies, this one is quite internalized. Uh, by my calculation, it's approximately, I don't know, forty feet from the side property line and incorporated into the roof line. And that helps me with some of my concerns about neighbor privacy and, um, you know, impact on the neighbor to the right. I think it would be improved if there was a six-foot screen wall on that right side extending from the toilet compartment out to the face of the primary bed bedroom, um, which one would clean up some construction details that I think they're going to be up against. And then two, really, uh, capture any light or sound that may incur in that corner. So, uh, basically what I'm saying is I would be in favor of the project as designed uh, if they would be agreeable to a a sound wall, for lack of a better word, uh, in that location that I described.
Um, Commissioner, does it help that we, uh, like we shared our plans and with the owner, with the neighbors on the side you're referring to, and they were okay with it? And and they are renting it out. They don't live there themselves and they agree to our plans. Would would that be?
So so that that's a, first of all, this is our time to comment. We'll ask you
Oh, I'm sorry.
In the future, so
I'm sorry.
But, um, I, we're not only looking for who's living there now, but who's also living there in the future. So we'd like to be consistent in our, um, interpretation because balconies can continue to be the, one of the major items that we review on a bi-weekly basis here. So this is what we would typically recommend, and this would be what I would condition as part of. If I were to vote in favor of the project, I would want to see some accommodation for screening along that edge of the balcony, not at the property line, but at the balcony itself. That's it for me, David.
All ready? Thank you, dude. Uh, Sam or?
No, I'm in favor, project.
Frank, any comments, questions?
No, I think long as the balcony issue is addressed, it's a very straightforward project for us and I would be in favor of it.
Okay. I as well. Do we have a motion? Who would like to have a motion?
Well, I can do that.
Do you want?
Why don't you give it a try? Oh, my God, it'll it'll be one of my first ever. So bear with me. I move that we approve. Let me get the numbers right here. Sorry, I'm toggling back and forth here. Uh, SC twenty one, excuse me.
That's right.
Eight, yeah, this, I feel like this is an eye test. Zero zero five three one eight four eight Fallen Leaf Lane. Per the findings and conditions as listed in the staff report, uh, with the slight modification of the condition that the balcony can remain as designed, although the applicant must add a six-foot solid screen wall measured from the height of the deck balcony from the edge of the toilet compartment out to the face of the primary bedroom. And I believe that is on a two-point. Once again, I'm toggling back and forth here. It looks like it's seven foot four dimension. Is that correct? Yes, on a one point zero four, basically that's seven foot nine dimension uh, from the toilet compartment out to the edge of the bedroom four wall be a solid six-foot wall uh, consistent with the other siding materials.
Second?
W- 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 can I get a little clarification?
Yes.
So it will have a solid, so it's sort of like an inlet or it comes straight across. So is the balcony where the the doors open up to four foot all the way across?
Right.
Um, yeah, little pocket that's next to the toilet is still part of the balcony, but there's a wall going from the toilet to seven nine to basically where the equivalent wall would be where the doors are.
Yes, exactly.
Okay.
Actually, they would be back four feet. Whoever did that, bring that red line back four feet. And that would be a solid six-foot wall.
Okay, so then what you saw, if you were in the side yard, is just four feet of balcony?
Yes.
Okay, thank you for that clarification. Uh, Sam, did you want to second that?
I did.
We'll go ahead and then vote. Sam?
Aye.
Frank?
Aye.
Jude?
Aye.
And myself is I as well. So it's passed with that additional amendment to the condition with the wall. Okay, so now move on to commissioners' reports and comments. Do we have anything, Sean?
No, we do not at the moment. Um, the the only thing is, well, I guess under potential
Future agenda.
Yeah, I could talk about under potential, but I have no, nothing to discuss tonight.
Okay.
I I wanted to mention, I I got an email back from Sean. Maybe we all did, but I got a email from Open Voices about some issues that I couldn't understand, and it was sent to all the members of the DRC. So I don't know if you got that, but it was some spamming activity. But, uh, has that happened before, Sean, to like
Yes, uh, yes, the IT department, um, quarantined that item and sent out an email to staff. And I tried to forward it to the commissioners to not let them know it was a phishing exercise by a spammer. So if you do receive those, please do not respond or do not click on any of the links. They're just trying to collect your information or gain access to city dot, uh, city email accounts if you have one.
So I shouldn't have given them my social security number and credit cards?
Yeah, yeah, you're a nice guy.
Foiled again. Okay, so Sean, I think we have, uh, could you explain what's going on on the upcoming one on the twenty second?
Yeah.
So both myself and and Commissioner Ma will not be present.
Yes, so the meeting will be canceled. We we were thinking of adding another meeting, but um, the planning division has been severely understaffed and, um, the director advised us to not hold, not schedule a special meeting. That staff needed, uh, just a slight break since we've had non-stop meetings and we're short by quite a few employees.
Okay, so then our next meeting will be the first Wednesday in August.
Yes, we do have very full agendas. We did have items on the July twentieth meeting. Those are going to be pushed to August and then the August items will be pushed the second meeting in August. Um, so, yeah, we we will have filled agendas for the next probably month and a half after we return in August.
Okay, and then when you had sent out that note to check everyone's schedule, is there any potential commissioners being missed in August or September?
No, um, no, I've not been advised of any of us not having a quorum in August.
Okay. Okay, anything else?
Oh, so the meeting on the twentieth is canceled?
Yes, we will. Next week, I believe we will send out a notice, but yes, the July twentieth meeting will be canceled.
Okay, and the third of August and the seventeenth of August are are good and then seventh of August or seventh of, uh, September is is also good.
Yes, currently, I I don't have information on on the commissioner's attendance for September. Um, but yes, we will have probably four items per meeting from all of August and the first meeting in September, I would imagine. We do have a heavy workload and we, I think we're going down to two planners in the next, starting, uh, tomorrow.
Wow, are you one of the two, Sean?
Yeah, it's just myself and Ja. We're we're, we should have four, I think, and we have two. And we we, uh, and that'll start and then we're hoping to recruit sometime. It'd probably take three, six months before they recruit and get a planning technician on board and then hopefully replace Steve's, uh, position. He's the interim manager, so they've kept his position vacant.
All right, and so he's left at this point?
No, he's the manager, so he doesn't, um, he does city council and planning commission projects, but he doesn't come to DRC very often anymore.
Good.
Are you gonna for a second? Hello?
I'm sorry, who, who?
Yeah, this is Priyanka. Priyanka?
Uh, yeah, we have
Just double confirming if the project is approved.
Well, we we've closed out your item.
Okay, great.
So, yeah, so if you have questions or whatnot, you can talk with Sean, uh, tomorrow.
Oh, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
May I ask the commissioners, was, so I sent a couple of times emails with the links and the phone numbers. Was that helpful or was that too much? I I was trying to follow up. Okay.
No, no, it's much better, actually.
Okay, we'll make sure.
That's good.
We'll make sure to do it.
Yeah, the morning of day of is beautiful.
Okay, we'll we'll make sure to keep.
On my calendar just makes it, uh, you know, uh, one step, um, zoom.
Well, I I will continue to do the Outlook calendar request to you and then I will also send, uh, the links with everything a few times before the meeting, especially on the day of. I'll send it again.
Very, thank you. It's very much appreciated. With that, I will go ahead and adjourn the meeting. And you guys, bye, uh, the next month or so.
Okay, take care.
Bye, guys.